Okay, I think we're ready. The others will straggle in, I suppose, if they straggle in. We've got all the staff here. So let's call a committee of whole meeting to order for March eleventh to two thousand twenty four. Welcome, everybody. Like to acknowledge that we're meeting today in the heart of the traditional territories of the Dene Cree and Dene Zau people of the Fort Nelson First Nation and the Prophet River First Nation. We further recognize the rights inherent in our treaty. And finally, we celebrate the contributions and enduring presence of eighteen people who have lived in this region for some time. So, thank you. Are there any?
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is David Clark. I'm the wildfire officer, acting wildfire officer for the Fort Nelson Fire Zone. So I took this position May fifteenth when Gator retired, and I've been in it since then. Scott and Aaron asked me to come present a bit about what occurred in the Fort Nelson Fire Zone itself, to have a little more focused perspective on what occurred last season and kind of how the zone works. So a bit on my background. So I started with wildfire in two thousand five in the Mackenzie Fire Zone. That's where I grew up. I'm now out of the Prince George Fire Zone as a wildfire technician and covering this position until we can find a permanent full-time applicant. So today I'm going to kind of cover the structure of the Fort Nelson Fire Zone, preparedness, the two thousand twenty-three response, go through a bit of a case study, talk about the outlook for the two thousand twenty-four wildfire season, and then touch on fire smart at the end of it. We'll go to the the slide after that one. So the B C wildfire service is broken up into six fire centers. Obviously, the Fort Nelson Fire Zone falls within the Prince George Fire Center. If we can go to the next slide. So the Fort Nelson Fire Zone is our northernmost zone in the Prince George Fire Center. It's nine point seven million hectares, so over ten percent of the province of B C's land base. So we go north to the Yukon and Northwest Territories border. We go east to Alberta. We go south to about Truch, and then west out to Lower Post and the Ternan Creek. I can go to the next slide. So this is the Fort Nelson Fire Zone's org structure. So at the top, you have the wildfire officer, which is myself. And then there's an operations assistant that would support our day-to-day admin and then our operational admin during fire activations. Reporting to me, I have two wildfire technicians. So those are two permanent year-round employees. And they have some staff underneath them. So Rena Dana is our new wildfire technician. She just started a couple of weeks ago, and she will, once she's up to speed, she will be supervising three wildfire assistants. So Chris Stanley, he's been in the community for a long time. I believe this might be his thirtieth season in the Fort Nelson Fire Zone. And then we have Albert Kiper, who's been around for about ten seasons. And then one of them is vacant right now. And then a new position that we're adding this year is an asset management assistant. So that's to assist us with our movement equipment, our facilities, to kind of take some of the workload off our wildfire assistants and wildfire technicians, so that they have more time to prepare our staff and respond to wildfires. Griffin Redman is the other technician. He's currently acting in that position. We will be posting that position and hopefully filling it permanently in the spring. And he supervises four IA crews. So we have four four-person crews within the Fort Nelson Fire Zone. And an IA crew is an initial attack crew. So they're largely focused on those initial fires that we get to call, and they would respond to that. We didn't have all of their positions filled this past season, just the challenges of the North and some of the staffing issues that we've had provincially, but we have had a hundred percent return of all our seasonal staff. So below the two wildfire technicians, so the wildfire assistants, the crew leaders, the asset management assistant, the ops assistant, those are all seasonal positions. So their term is generally from the beginning of March until the end of October. And then they're laid off for the winter, and then we recall them in the first week of February, and then they start end of February, early March. Can go to the next slide. So just to cover our crew types, so talked a bit about the initial attack crew. So that's the four-person crew. They would be at the Fort Nelson Zone. If the hazard is there, we would have helicopters on with them, and they would be ready to respond within thirty minutes to any wildfires within the area. Provincially, we have a number of unit crews. There are four unit crews within the Prince George Fire Center. So those are twenty-two-person crews. They're generally used for larger sustained action fires, but they can also be broken up to do initial attack fires if we need them to do so. So the unit crews within the Prince George Fire Center, they're located in Fort St. John, Mackenzie, Prince George, and Vanderhoof. We do have the repel program as well. That's based out of salmon arm, but they can be moved to other areas of the province to support. So they have been up into the Prince George Fire Center and into Fort Nelson in prior seasons. And then located in Fort St. John and Mackenzie, we have the paratack crews. So that would be responding in the planes and jumping out and parachuting down to the fires. Go to the next slide. So next, I'm going to talk about preparedness. There's no questions about that initial bit? So preparedness is one of the larger parts of our organization. So preparedness is advanced or engines made to enable timely, effective and appropriate responses to specific hazardous events and emerging disaster situations that may threaten life, property, or the environment. So we can go to the next slide. So some of the activities that we complete during preparedness. So we have internal training. So that would be our basic fire suppression training, some of our more advanced fire behavior training. We do external training. So we've gone to tabletop exercises at emergency operations centers. We've done cross-training with local fire departments, cross-training with local First Nations communities. The standby and the pre-positioning of resources. I'm going to get into standby a little bit more later, but that's basically when we have our staff on call and ready to respond to fires. And then the pre-positioning of resources in areas of identified hazard, we can move our resources and have them staged in those areas in advance of possible wildfires. And then community engagement is a large part of that. So that would be going to new trade fairs, talking about fire smart. Wildfire risk reduction works would fall under that. So we can complete works on crown land to reduce the fire hazard around communities, and that would be in coordination with regional districts and municipalities and private landowners. So we don't do work on those pieces of land, but we do do work on the crown land that would be adjacent to that. And then hazard abatement. So from logging those kinds of activities, sometimes there's piles left behind. So we'll go out, we'll do assessments in the field. And if we identify piles that need to be abated, we can go out and burn those piles in the fall and the winter to reduce the the risk to community there. And then fire smart is a big initiative. So we're really pushing that in trying to bring a collaborative approach to protecting communities. So this is just an example of our crews completing some of that wildfire risk reduction work. So they've gone in and they've in the stand, they've proven the stand, and then they're taking out those fine fuels to reduce the intensity of the fire if it were to burn through that stand. Go to the next slide. So when we're determining the zone's preparedness needs, there's a few inputs that we have. So we have weather stations located strategically throughout the Fort Nelson Fire Zone, and those will give us data. So they're telling us the temperature, the relative humidity, the wind speed. And then we have what's called our indices, so we can actually measure the dryness of the fuel, and those calculations will give us a possible rate of spread for the fire, so we can kind of forecast what fire behavior would be in the area. We also have fire weather forecasters on staff. So we have one attached directly to the Prince George Fire Center, so service Fort Nelson on all the zones within the Fire Center. They rotate through on our roster throughout the season, so to make sure that they're getting proper breaks, but they will give us wind warnings, severe thunderstorm warnings, so we can kind of get a good picture of when the lightning is going to be progressing through the zone. And then we have fire behavior specialists, so they can help us with fire growth modeling. So taking the weather inputs, they can forecast where the fire might possibly move, given certain weather inputs, and that helps us in our response to suppress those fires. So the outputs of all that, it lets us know how many personnel we're going to need to have on standby, given a certain hazard, what kind of fire gear we need to have on hand in the zone. So if we need to order more in, there's a an equipment depot in Prince George that we can source, you know, structure protection units, more pumps, more hose, hand tools, et cetera. It helps us with what aviation needs we're going to have. So how many helicopters are we going to need based on how many initial attack crews we're going to have on hand? How many medium helicopters? So those are more to support with bucketing or moving multiple crews, you know, how many of those do we need? And then if we need heavy equipment on to construct guard. And obviously, the higher the hazard, the more resources we have on hand. So in the Fort Nelson Fire Zone, we have a rotated position called the Zone Wildfire Coordination Officer. So we have a roster that's established for that. That all of our single resource staff, so that would be that work chart I showed you, everyone except for the crews can be in that position. So we set up a schedule and a rotation, and we'll all rotate through. And we also have single resources from other zones that come in and fill the roster as needed. So that Zone Wildfire Coordination Officer reports to the operations officer in the Fire Center. So the operations officers supporting all of the zones within the Fire Center in their response to wildfire, so they can help us with guidance, additional resources, those kinds of things. And he answers to the Regional Wildfire Coordination Officer that is in the Prince George Fire Center. So that is the person that is in charge of fire operations for the whole Fire Center, and it's a rotated position, much like the Zone Wildfire Coordination Officer. So there's a rotated position for that. And then at the top level, there's the Provincial Wildfire Coordination Officer. So he oversees the coordination of wildfire preparedness and response for the entire province. So within the zone, the Zone Wildfire Coordination Coordinator will be determining the preparedness levels based on those inputs from the weather stations and the fire weather forecasters. So he'll be determining how many crews we're going to have on standby, if we need to bring in more crews to have on standby, how many response officers we're going to need on on standby, and a response officer. It's a single resource. They'll fly out, they'll assess fires. They can support our crews with decision makings, and as incidents get larger and expand, then they can take over those incidents as incident commander. And then additional resources that we can have on hand as needed. Any questions on preparedness?
Looks like it.
So now I want to dive into the two thousand twenty-three wildfire response. So what happened last year? So last year, we had a total of one hundred and fourteen incidents within the Fort Nelson Fire Zone. We were successful in containing and putting out seventy-four of those incidents, and ten of those were suspected to be human-caused wildfires. So I just say suspected because we do bring fire investigators up to investigate ones that are suspected to be human-caused, and then they can go to litigation. So I can't confirm whether or not they were human-caused. That is the total amount of hectares that were burned in the Fort Nelson Fire Zone. So one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two hectares. So it's quite a significant amount. Prior to last year, I believe the record for the province as a total was one point four million hectares. So there was a significant amount of wildfire within this zone that we had to respond to. That, just to put in perspective, would be over two million, two hundred thousand football fields, and it would be twice as large as Prince Edward. Next slide. So this is directly from our dispatch program. So our dispatch program, we can track all reported wildfires, and we can also track lightning live. So we can see lightning as it strikes. I really wanted to put this in here, just to highlight that bubble that's around Fort Nelson. So a large portion of those seventy-four wildfires that we did contain and put out were within proximity to Fort Nelson. So that was our largest priority. We were seeing quite a significant amount of lightning around the area, and those were the ones that we prioritized.
On the map that we're looking at here, what's the difference between the information on the left and the right?
So the information on the left, those are the under-control wildfires. They're listed as under-control, all the orange ones with the numbers, and then the larger, the red blobs, those are the fire perimeters that we've tracked. So the ones that are listed as under-control right now, we know not all of them are currently burning. They were burning when the season ended, but now that it's snowed, a lot of those smaller ones, you're going to see go away. And I didn't include further west. There are some incidents out that way that we responded to as well. But just to give a good picture in this area. And then the ones on the right, all the gray numbers, those are the wildfires that we successfully contained and called out. So the ones that we had challenges with were obviously the ones that were a greater travel time distance from Fort Nelson. And unfortunately, with some of the significant winds that we did experience with the drought conditions, they presented significant challenges. So those incidents, we largely focused on structure protection. So we were out there putting sprinklers on cabins, oil and gas infrastructure, and then doing tactical ignitions to protect those values. And the ignitions that we did do on these incidents, it was only areas that would have burned if we did not burn. So it was to protect those values, because if we burn the fuels in advance of the wildfire, it takes away its ability to build up N S D and gives us a better chance to protect those values. Go to the next slide. So my one number there is inaccurate. So we actually had eight to twelve helicopters for the majority of the season. I went back and reviewed the numbers. So these are the resources that we utilized last summer, and there's a couple bullets I I added to this slide as well. So we did have air tankers supporting us throughout the the summer to protect values and get early containment on those initial attack wildfires. We had regular fixed-wing air patrols. So if we had lightning pass through, we would do once, sometimes twice, daily patrols of those areas so that we could identify these incidents and get on them as quick as we could. We had an incident management team here in June to support us initially. That was the only time that we had an incident management team in the zone. We certainly could have used them throughout the summer, but given the situation provincially, unfortunately, did not have the ability to have those resources here. We had initial attack crews and unit crews from across the province. So the furthest crew that we received in the zone here was from Grand Forks, the very southeastern portion of the province. We had structure protection specialists come up and help us build a structure protection plan, strategic plan. So we had them fly out to our incidents, identify structures, and working with our local communities, we identified through their GIS staff, some additional structures that would have been more challenging to find while we were flying around hidden by the canopy. And then we had structure protection crews come up and support us in the installation of structure protection on some of these oil and gas infrastructure and cabins that were identified, and some of them came all the way from Vancouver Island to help us out. And then we had a significant amount of contract fire crews, type two and type three contractor. So the difference between the two is just in their training. So type two crews, they come with personnel that are able to fall trees, take three crews, don't come with that. So it's just a difference in their certification levels and how we can utilize them on wildfire. And then a couple additional points that I missed. We did also have significant paratack involvement out of Fort St. John, jumping on our incidents. We also had American smoke jumpers supporting us as well. And then we utilized some of our local heavy equipment contractors on a few of the incidents where we were able to. Yep, go to the next slide. So again, just to highlight, so within a fifty-kilometer radius of Fort Nelson, we had thirty wildfires contained and out. So our priority last year, given the situation provincially, was really to ensure that our communities were protected. And I think we did a reasonably good job of doing that in the Fort Nelson Fires. So wildfires are actioned in priority order. So within the Fort Nelson Fire Zone, every fire will have a value associated with it. So whether it's cultural, economic, private property, we assign our resources based on those. So again, we focused on wildfires in and around Fort Nelson proper itself, because that was the the highest value in the area, significant amount of residents and and properties that needed to be protected. We also look at wildfires based on not just the values at risk, but the terrain type it's in, fuel type it's in, where our indices are at, so the fuel dryness, and then the size of the wildfire itself. So those drive the decisions in the wildfires we can action. So, you know, it depends the resources we have on hand, distance to travel. So we take looks at that. We work with our communities to identify their values, just to ensure that we have our bases covered as well as we can. Unfortunately, last season, we didn't have enough resources to action every wildfire, so we focused on the ones where we would have the most success and be able to protect the most values. Structure protection. So like I said, last season, we had structure protection specialists come up to help us with construction of a plan to identify the values, what resources we're going to protect them. And then using that structure protection plan, we had our local crews as well as some imported resources out in the field, putting sprinkler systems up around the cabins where we were able to. You know, we also will remove flammable material from around those. So we'll pull firewood away from people's homes, or we'll put plastic over top of it so that the plastic gets wet and then that doesn't catch. It's really important to not have flammable material near your your property, your structures. As an example, in Fort McMurray, I believe it was, someone left a wicker broom on their deck, and an ember got into that wicker broom, and the whole house was lost due to that single broom. And then the other piece tied to that is when and where it makes tactical sense, we will conduct ignitions around those properties that we have structure protection on. And then to to touch on this briefly, so why do we conduct ignitions? A lot of the times, it's for the safety of our personnel. So maybe the terrain that the wildfire is in is unsafe, or the fuel type, it's unsafe at the time for our crews to respond. So we can use it to bring it to terrain where we have a higher chance of success of catching and containing the fire. It's proven to be quite effective in those instances where we're not able to go and directly attack the fire. So there's three methods of actioning wildfire. So there's direct attack, which would be crews are directly on the wildfire, they're working around the perimeter spraying the perimeter. There's indirect attack where we're still, you know, constructing guard, spraying water on the fire, but we're doing it from the from the base and the flanks and trying to work around and pinch off the head. And then there's indirect attack, where it might be done in combination. But with the other methods, but we're looking at constructing guard further out from the fire line, doing ignitions from that to remove the fuel in the advance of the wildfire and really reduce that intensity so that we can safely action it. And it's only used if we really deem it's required to be used. Some of the challenges that we had last season, you know, there was a significant amount of wildfire in Alberta and British Columbia. So there was a significant amount of smoke. And when that visibility is low, we aren't able to utilize our aerial resources. If you can't see, you can't fly. Fire intensity was also a big challenge. So this is a picture that was taken on one of my flights out at the Fire by Max Hamish League. A fire intensity like that, there's a common misconception that aerial resources put out fire. They unfortunately don't put out fire. It's the ground crews that put out fire. What aerial resources help us to do is slow fire growth, reduce fire intensity, and help our crews get in there so that they can contain it and put it out. And unfortunately, when wildfire is looking like this, they they aren't able to fly at the head of it. So some things that they can do, they can drop retardant in and around structures to try and protect them that way. If we have guard constructed, they can put retardant along it to help support our efforts there. And we can wet down fuels with buckets as needed. Terrain and fuel type can be challenging. We're in the boreal forest, so that's what we call C two. So it's black spruce. There's ladder fuels from the bottom of the tree to the top of the tree. So there's limbs from the bottom to the top. And with the the saps and the resins, it's quite a volatile type of tree, very wind-driven. So if we get a significant amount of wind combined with ladder fuels, these fires can get up and go very quickly. So, you know, as we are able, we like to find them and get on them as quick as possible, because they are quite easy to contain if we can get on them in time before the wind picks them up. And then another challenge last season was obviously the volume of incidents with over a hundred. Any questions on the response last season?
I guess I have a question with respect to the personnel resources that you have. When it starts to get really intense in the more populated areas of the province, at any time, did you lose your crew from here to someplace else? Or so the the minimum crew size was maintained throughout the whole season here. So they don't rob Peter to pay Paul, so to speak.
No, that's correct. So our initial attack crews, our officers, they they work within the Fort Nelson Fire Zone for the entirety of the season. And we actually had a surplus of crews from other fire zones around the province that were supporting us as well.
All right, for the entire season? So not just to shoulder the front and the back when it was really busy downtown?
Nope, correctly. We did lose some crew personnel in the fall, as some of our crew members are students. So their contract ended at the end of August, and they returned to school. So we did lose some capacity in that sense, but it was backfilled by resources from other areas provincially.
Right. So the tanker resources that we have, so the flying tankers, they that's a provincial resource, right? So you know, it's heartening, I guess, that we have a tanker base at our airport. But if there's no planes there to fly out, it doesn't help us much. So but within that fifty-kilometer zone that that you talked about, how much of that was was resourced or or put out with with the tankers? How much of that? How much do we need those tankers in town, I guess?
Yeah. I would have to go back through the numbers. I wouldn't say it was significant amount of those initial attack fires that we used air tankers on. We certainly did use them a number of times this season. We certainly did use uh, them a number of times this season. And uh, for a large portion of the season, they were staged, a, a group of them at least was staged in Fort St. John.
Right.
Um, the unfortunate situation in Fort Nelson is the uh, the tarmac uh, to the air tanker base. It, with the weight of the tankers, it's no longer adequate for them. Um, but we have moved the tanks. Um, closer uh, to the terminal. Um, so we will be able to have them staged there. And filled.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, um, so this, I just want to go through a bit of a, a case study. So we did have two uh, quite significant wildfires. In the Cleto Creek area, uh, just west of town. Um. So this is a, a picture that I took. This was not the uh, first day of this wildfire incident. So there's actually a, a red line, um, underneath that smoke column. You can see it comes back to the road. Um, that's actually a strip of retardant there. Um, so we did use, um. The Electress, um, to action this, uh, as well as the Q four hundred. Uh, if you go to the next slide. Uh, this is a, a picture that I took when I was um, out making sure that the crews were um, well supported. Um, this is the, the Q four hundred and it was doing a, a drop at the head of the fire. Uh, to try and slow it down so that our crews were able to get around it, um, from the rear of the fire. Um, so these are the, the two incidents, um, that is the highway there, uh, that you can see. Um, so the, the benefit of this is we had a early discovery, both from the public and from our staff flying around. Um, so we were able to get on both of these incidents quickly. Um, we had uh, multiple helicopters. Bucketting on this one. We drew resources from other lower priority fires and crews from other lower priority fires to come action these ones. Uh, we had crews that were on deck, uh, at the zone. So we sent two crews initially. Um, with a few trucks. So some of them flew and then uh, some of the personnel drove trucks with equipment out. Um, and then they were able to, to start bucketing on them both right away. Um, these were both, uh. A number of weeks apart, so uh, not in the same timeframe. Um, and we also had uh, paratech crews and smoke jumpers jump on these initially, uh, to support us in, in containment. And then uh, once it was safe to do so, we, we brought in uh, contract firefighters, uh, to support us as well. So um, that being said, we, we, you know, we really appreciate those reports from the, from the public, uh. You know, even if we are aware of it and working on it or on our way to it, uh, it does still help. It's better to be safe than sorry. Um, any questions on that? Okay, um, so now I want to talk about the twenty twenty four wildfire season. Um, so the, the topic that's uh, quite hot in the media right now is obviously the holdover fires. And uh, we do have uh, a number of holdover fires within the, the Fort Nelson fire zone, as I'm sure you're all aware. Um, they are quite common. Um, we did have holdover fires. Uh, from twenty twenty two in the twenty twenty three wildfire season. Um, uh, so what happens is they get insulated by snow, uh, and in this area, we have a deep duff layer and uh, the drought now. Um, that's allowing it to, to get down into the roots, into the duck, and then the blanket of snow over top, uh, lets it stay. Uh, hidden and then it can uh, pop back up, um, as the snow melts and the, and the heat comes back. Um, so this image, uh, is an example of a holdover, uh, fire from another season. Um, so. It's in the black. So when I say in the black, what we're working when we're actioning wildfire is the perimeter of the wildfire. The stuff that's in the middle, um, while we may action it depending on proximity to the perimeter. Um, if it's something that's of no risk, uh, to escape that perimeter, we're going to leave that and focus on other uh, priorities. Um, if it's in an area that uh, you know, the public, it might be visible, will to the public, we will go. Back and put that out, uh, if and when we're able, um, just to reduce that, um, concern uh, for the public. Um, and then there are some, some hazards associated with holdover fires. Um. So you can have deep ash pits, uh, and there's going to be danger trees. So roots get burnt out, trees can fall on the wind. So we really don't recommend uh, members of the public to go a- and put these out. Um. You know, they may not have the training, uh, to properly fall trees. They may not see an ash pit. So they could end up with uh, severe burns. Uh, based on, um, those hazards. Um, and not. Every holdover fire is going to become an out of control wildfire. So it depends if those smokes are on the perimeter or if they're within the block. Uh, we are certainly aware, uh, I did, I went on a flight, um, back in February and uh, assessed some of these fires. So there are some areas that are on the perimeter, uh, that we're going to be actioning, uh, once we have our crew personnel back. So within the Fort Nelson fire zone, uh, our crews are back April second and April eighth. Um, but we are building uh, plans and we will be drawing on resources, uh, regionally and possibly provincially. Um, to start works on these incidents, uh, in March. Um. So if you go uh, on our webpage, you can see the active wildfires. Um. A number of these have been left under control until we can go out and verify one hundred percent that they are out. Um. It's going to be the larger fires we know that are going to have, uh, be most of the issues that we have to deal with for holdover fires. Um, so this map of active inc- incidents is not necessarily representative of all the wildfires that we're going to need to act. We might have to go out and assess them, but we may not need to put crews on them and action them. Um, so the ones that we're really going to be focused on in this region, uh. The wild, for large wildfires near Max Hamish Lake, uh, highway seventy seven, uh, out in the S Y D. And then the ones along, uh, the Rainbow Lake, uh, power line. Um, and then any oil and gas infrastructure, uh, in the, in the northeast corner there. Go to the next slide. Um, so the action that we're currently taking. Um, so we're, we're monitoring, monitoring these incidents with uh, satellite. None of them have shown heat signatures that we've seen yet. Um, but we are monitoring for that, uh, and we're waiting for the snow to clear up a bit so that we can do. Uh, high level scans. So we'll have a fixed wing plane fly over these fires with an infrared camera. And it'll be able to pinpoint all of these spots within a few meters of accuracy. Um, so that's going to drive. Um, where we're going to be directing our, our crews to action these fires. Uh, and then combined with that, we're going to continue to be doing assessment flights, um, so that we can get a, a lower level visual. Once we have those uh, heat signatures identified. Uh, we do have provincial and regional support for this. Um, so we have a, a former wildfire employee, uh, out of Vanderhoof. He's retired. Um, he's quite good, uh, and knowledgeable in fire behavior. So he is helping us to build an action plan for these holdover fires. Uh, and that's not just the Fort Nelson fire zone. That's also the Dawson Creek Fire Zone and Fort St. John Fire Zone. And may look at the Mackenzie and the Van Hoof, uh, fire zones as well, because there's potential that they may have. Uh, holdover fires as well. Um, recruitment, so um, we're actively in the process of hiring more staff. Uh, I'm very optimistic that we're going to be able to fill all of our vacancies this season. So we will, we will be at full complement, um. Which I've been told has not uh, happened since I started my career and I started in two thousand five. So this is my twentieth season. Um, and then all of that is going to feed into our fire analysis. So each fire, uh, that is over a certain size or has been burning, uh, for a certain amount of days. We ac- activate a fire analysis. Um, so we assess these fires, we identify values within the area, uh, the fuel type. Um, and then we establish trigger points, um, so that the, the trigger points would be, um. Tied to what kind of response, uh, we're taking or uh, adjustment to response if it crosses those. Uh, trigger points, um, and it will also feed into the resource needs, um, that we need to respond to these uh, holdover fires. And any spring fires, um, that we may end up with. Um. We do know, uh, it's likely to be a busy spring. We're not certain what the summer is going to be like. Um, mid-March, we're going to be getting our seasonal outlook. So that'll give us a vision, better picture from our weather forecast for what the fire season. Uh, uh, will be. Um, but the fortunate part of what the spring is, uh, lightning typically doesn't start until. May, um, so it's really going to be human caused fires that we're going to have to worry about. Uh, and we only had ten last year, which in my opinion is, is quite good compared to the hundred and fourteen incidents that we had. Um, so all that said, um, as soon as we're able, we're going to be implementing that plan. Uh, I recognize that Alberta has crews and they are actioning, uh, those wildfires. Um, just with the seasonal nature of our staff, um, we won't be getting action on those until, uh, this month. We can go to the next slide. Um, so this is just a visual from our dispatch program. So uh, this is a fire along highway seventy seven, so running north to south. Uh, that's, that's highway seventy seven. So I went out and flew, um, a bunch of our wildfires. But looking specifically at this one, that yellow line, that's all zigzaggy. That is my flight that it tracked. So looking for, for hotspots. Um, and to give an example of, uh, one of the hotspots I found, if we go to the, the next slide. Um, so this is what we're seeing right now. Uh, challenging to see obviously, but on that uh, cut line. Um, there is a smoke within that red circle. Um, it is within the perimeter, uh, by a few hundred feet. So that would be one that we, uh, may go action, um, based on visibility from the highway. Um, but we may not need to. It's, it's hard to get a clear picture, um, of the, of the fire edge with the, the snow on the ground. Um, so we'll have a much better visual, um, once we can do an assessment flight, once the snow is gone. Uh, and once we get those high level scans that will pinpoint hotspots for us. Um, but I wanted to get out there and uh, see what we may potentially be looking at, um, in the spring. And we can go to the next slide. So the twenty twenty four outlook, so as I said, our seasonal outlook is uh, coming out in a, a couple of weeks. Um, so that's going to give us a better picture of what we might be looking at. And uh, I do want to clearly differentiate that. You know, because it's a busy spring, it does not necessarily mean that there's going to be a busy summer. So right now we're in El Niño. Um, there is talk that we, the El Niño might break and we might get into La Niña, which could. Potentially bring cooler weather. Um, I'm not optimistic on that. Um, the indications are that it will be a busy summer. So we're going to prepare, uh, for the worst and hope for the best. Uh, and then spring dip, uh, in this area is uh, mid-May to end of May. Um, so that's uh, kind of a forward greenup. So before the deciduous, uh, get their moisture back. Um, so that's a, a high risk, uh, time period in the, the spring fire season. Um, so we'll be uh, preparing to respond appropriately, um, when that occurs. And then I put June on there, uh, because June is largely our indicator for whether it's going to be a, a busy fire season or not, not. We have had busy fire, fire seasons forecasted in the past. Um, and then with the precipitation that we got through June, it's ended up becoming a more average, slightly above average, uh, wildfire season. So, um, we'll have a better picture of, uh, what the summer is going to look like in the coming months. Um, any questions on, uh, on twenty twenty four outlook?
Well, I'm certainly glad that you're, that you're working on these holdover fires and, and flying them and. I, I don't know that the, that the level of snow that we have out there, we, it's so dry. You know, the muskeg is so deep and it's so dry that normally it's saturated, right? With, with water. So a normal June water period would, would top it up and it's just so dry. I suspect that. That even if we get any rain and that muskeg is just going to suck up every bit of moisture that there is. And because the duff layer is so thick, it's going to be drier than, than ever. It's, yeah. I just, uh, which, which my concern is of course, and I think everybody, you, you hear it around town, is the concern of. Uh, we're not starting from scratch. It's not like a normal year with the numbers of holdover fires that are, that are out there. With the dry conditions that are there, as soon as the snow's gone and the wind starts blowing up, we're. You're into it early, maybe even in March, depending on how much snow we get over the next couple of weeks and how much, how warm it gets. So I know certainly on my trapline, there's, there's holdover fires out there on the perimeter that, that I'm, I'm worried about. And I'm sure, you know, when you look at the number of blotches in northeast part of this province, I'm sure that, uh, that that's. Indicative of what's happening all over out there where there's muskeg. And so I, I think you're really in for. For a long season and, uh, but I'm glad to hear that, that you are out there flying and, and having a look at some of these sites.
Yeah, I, and I, I do recognize that and it is a valid concern. Um, I've been coming up here fighting fires since two thousand and seven. And this is the driest I've ever seen the muskeg. Um, you know, normally there's water, ample water sources available everywhere. Um, but they're getting further and further out. And Chris Stanley, who's been here for thirty years, it's the driest year he's ever seen it as well. So it, it does pose significant challenges, um, and we do recognize that. Um, not all areas of the province, uh, are prone to spring fire seasons. So we will be able to draw on resources, uh, regionally and provincially as well.
So is your plan for the fifty kilometer radius still the main plan? Or are you really going to try to get out into the, those peripheral areas, I guess, further out?
So generally, new incidents, um, become a priority. Uh, depends on their location, values, uh, et cetera. So if there was anything new that popped up within that radius, we would go action that. Um, but given we won't be getting into lightning season, uh, for a bit yet. We will be actioning those holdover fires and we will continue to action those holdover fires, um, as long as there are no. New incidents threatening values.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Um, I'm curious about the, the fact that it's dry in the muskeg is also all the water holes are dry that you normally action fires with. Um, is there any proactive way of dealing with that as in strategically planting? Uh, ponds, I mean, building, building ones and so on that can capture water this time of year? Is it, I know there's discussion about that in other parts of the province. Is there simply the distance? I'm looking at the distance to water from some of the, uh, the holdover fires. And even actioning them with helicopter and buckets is now becoming challenging. Um, so I'm curious if there's any discussion going on about how we could, we could actually. Create some water storage sit, uh, sites.
So, um, it hasn't got to the level yet where we're, we're not able to action these wildfires for, for water. Um, it's just requiring us to go a little bit further. Yeah, um, and we did have a meeting this morning. Um, to talk about structure protection in and around, uh, Fort Nelson and uh, the proximity of, of the river. Um, and Parker Lake, uh, we are sitting quite well, uh, within this area. So, um, those conversations are, are happening in advance of the wildfire season up here in this area as well, certainly.
Well, stop. Okay.
Um, I don't want to touch on this, uh, for too long, um, but I, I, I do think it's really important to, um, to highlight. Uh, Fire Smart, um, so if you can go to the next slide. Um, so what is Fire Smart? So Fire Smart is designed to mitigate the risk of and educate residents and stakeholders regarding the potential for large uncontrollable wildfires. Near communities and critical infrastructure. If we can go to the next slide. Um, so why Fire Smart? It has proven to be effective, um, and it is a collaborative approach. Um, so while we can respond to wildfire, it is critical that, uh, residents and communities are, are starting to work. Um, on some of these hazards, uh, in the area. Um, if we can go to the next slide. So I mean, obviously conducting Fire Smart works, it's small steps that can save your community, uh, your home and your communities. Um, so. If residents are conducting Fire Smart works on their property, it really increases our effectiveness when we're installing structure protection. Um, so it reduces the potential for the intensity of the wildfire in and around the home, uh, by not having flammable materials, shrubs, trees, bushes. Um, as close in proximity as, as maybe people would like for the scenery. But, um, the, the benefit of increasing the effectiveness of our structure protection efforts. But um the the benefit of increasing the effectiveness of our structure protection efforts um is huge. Um, and that work should be done in in combination uh with uh community works. Uh, and then our works that uh we would be supporting with our um expertise, uh advice, and then uh some of the wildfire risk reduction work that uh we can conduct on ground land. Go to the next slide. Um, so obviously, that collaboration creates wildfire resilient communities. So, you know, we are here to uh respond and protect people's uh properties, values, uh and uh lives, livelihood. Um, but if uh we're all working together uh to make these wildfire resilient communities, um, it's going to make everything more streamlined uh for everyone. And uh it won't create as big of a draw on resources provincially. So, you know, we may be able to spread those resources uh around to areas that need them. Any uh additional questions?
Questions? That? I'm wondering about, uh, you talked about expertise around the wild uh the fire, the FireSmart program. So if your um fire, wildfire officers are not busy at fires, are they trained to do uh uh inspections or uh, you know, working with homeowners to have a look at the property, to see the different things that the homeowners might be able to do? Is is that something that you do, or are you expecting our fire department to do all of that?
So it is something that we can do. Um, my staff aren't currently trained in the uh inspection process. Uh, it's something that is on uh my list um since I took this position. Um, so, you know, as and when we are able, we can work with residents to help with um those assessments. Um, we just can't do the works on private property.
Yeah, yeah, I think I think the inspections would go a long ways to help, particularly as you as you look at our community and you look at the rural areas that go to the north uh west of town, so along the highway, all, you know, all of those rural areas, all three or four, all the way up to all the radar subdivisions, I think those are areas where people will have to do some work. Uh, and I think if if we're able to give them some guidance with respect to, you know, what the professionals, I mean, people will make their decisions, but at least if they understand the types of things, well, that should go, that should go, you know, they'll make their decision at that point. They may or may not remove the things, but having the expertise there to help them with their inspections, I think would go a long way to help us in that portion of the community. Anyways, you know, I I think we can do uh wildfire mitigation around the main community. But as we start to get out into the rural areas, I think that's where the FireSmart will will have to play a big role.
Yep.
And if 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 your folks are not busy fighting fires, if they could do inspections with us, I think, if we had a plan to do that, I think that would be a good thing.
Yep, I I agree with that. And there's also something called a a FireSmart community rep. Um, so I would really advocate getting uh one or a a couple within community that are uh able to help.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's not as big as some of the communities south, but there's still a lot of lot of folks out there. And I think it would take, you know, a season or two to get around to everybody and really have a good inspection of their yards, give them some advice.
Yep.
And of course, that it's not only in the north, it all the highway down to the south too, and the reserves, both of them, I think. Yeah, Code River, all of those areas would. Anyways, I think we're we're hoping to to get involved in that and do as much as as we can, but certainly any help we can get from you guys would be would be good.
Yep.
So if you can put in the word to get those folks trained, that'd be good.
Yes, certainly, certainly. Yeah, we're certainly happy to uh to be in involved in that. Um, and I I believe we have connected, we're going to be at the the trade show uh with some of the uh FireSmart materials, uh, you know, sharing a table with the the fire department.
Good. Anybody else? Okay, okay.
I just actually want to say thank you for the presentation. It's really informative and um it's kind of, everybody in the community is talking about the fire season that's coming up and have many concerns. But with us not having a newspaper, we struggle with communications with the community all all the time. Um, what are we doing to ensure the community is hearing this presentation? Do you share it in other platforms or?
Um, so my presentation specifically is um through Northern Rockies for this instance, but I have been uh collaborating with Erin and Scott and our communication staff to get some some messaging out provincially. Um, that's going to be uh more focused uh on this area as well as uh Fort St. John and Dawson Creek. Um, so I'm I'm hopeful that that will be coming out soon.
Okay, David, thank you very much for your time today and and the time that you've taken to put this presentation together. Uh, you know, our staff speaks highly of you and the work that you did uh last summer, working together with them. So uh, you know, we hope that this season will not be as bad as last season, but it's good to see that that you and your staff are preparing for it. So thank you very much for updating us.
Yeah, thank you for having me and uh at any point, um, I mean, our door is always open if anyone uh wants to come and uh have a bit of a tour and and see our operations. Um, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, there was no new business uh brought up, and so is there any public on now that are interested in uh asking a question? No? Okay, then we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. We will come back at six thirty.